Special Chief Secretary, Industries and Commerce, Infrastructure Investment Government of AP. Sri NP Ramakrishna Reddy G, CEO AP Maritime Board. Lieutenant Commander Ravindra Reddy G, EPT CEO AP Maritime Board. Collectors of Vishakapattanam, Shri Kakkulam, Vijayenagaram, Istukodavari, Westukodavari, Krishna, Gunthor. Sri Prakasham, luminaries from the industry, officials from different ministries and departments of government of India. Distinguished delegates, Vicky, media, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon to you all. I extend warm greetings and invite you all to the special session on investment opportunities in the state of Andhra Pradesh. Andhra Pradesh is one of the five fastest growing states in India with gross trade domestic product of about nine percent. Andhra Pradesh has a second largest longest coastline of nine hundred seventy-four kilometers after Gujarat with one thousand two hundred fifteen kilometers. The coastal line of Andhra Pradesh is dotted with a major port in Vishakapattanam and fifteen notified ports. While port of Vishakapattanam handles around seventy-five million tons per annum, the state ports under AP Maritime Board handle nearly hundred million tons per annum. The government of Andhra Pradesh is keen on utilizing its coast to the potential for accelerating the economic growth. Gujarat is utilizing its coastline effectively by handling nearly four point two five lakh tons per kilometer of coastline. While Andhra Pradesh handles volume of one point seven five lakh tons per kilometer of coastline. Andhra Pradesh ranks number one in fish production in the country with a share of nearly thirty percent and also stands number one in seafood exports for the last three years. Andhra Pradesh has always been at the forefront of economic growth in India. Ranked number one in ease of doing business amongst. It aspires to be the most sought after investment destination in India by offering a plethora of opportunities for investors to flourish. The state can position itself as an important logistic node center of the country in view of its positional advantage to trade with east and southeast. The national waterway number four is being developed in three phases covering the states of Andhra Pradesh, Karnataka, Maharashtra, Tamil Nadu and Puduchal. This project once completed will significantly help in cargo and passenger transportation in the states besides attracting tourism. Development of green field ports, airports, portlet industries, Vishakapattanam Chennai industrial corridor, Kakinnada SCW, petroleum, chemicals and petrochemical investment region are among the top projects in the state. I am sure that the government in Andhra Pradesh is already taking initiatives to unlock the capacity of the coastline of Andhra Pradesh by exploring the possibilities of developing new ports. With the industry-friendly ambience created by Honorable Chief Minister Sri Jagannathan Reddy Garu, investors are immensing interest in taking part in the development of the state through large-scale investment. Reputed investors have already signed MOUs worth forty-four thousand six hundred twenty-nine crores which are expected to be realized in next three to four years. I must thank AP Maritime Board, Chairperson Ramakrishna Reddy Garu and Karikara Velvansar in this country. AP Maritime Board has contributed for MOU's total worth of forty-four thousand six hundred twenty-nine. So the state of Andhra Pradesh may doubt tell its industrial and tourism policy for development and modernization of the ports and utilize its resources for faster economic growth. I sincerely hope that the state of Andhra Pradesh takes advantage of this forum to showcase its investment opportunities and gain from the Maritime India Summit two thousand twenty-one. So as per the schedule of the particular session, now we'll have, we are the fortunate ones to have Honorable Union Minister for Railways, Commerce and Industry, Consumer Affairs, Food and Public Distribution, Government of India Sri Pishgol Sap as a special speaker in this session. The tenure of Sri Pishgol G has been, as seen Indian Railways achieved its best ever safety record in two thousand eighteen nineteen through holistic measures including elimination of unmanned level crossings, production of safe safer coaches etcetera. He is instrumental in the launching of One Day Bharat Express between Delhi and Varanasi and Shremic specials for the migrant workers during the COVID nineteen pandemic. He led transformational changes India's power sector which includes electrification of nearly eighteen thousand remote villages of India. The rollout of power sector reforms, the launch of world's largest LED bulb distribution program Vizala and massive proliferation of renewable energy are some of his remarkable contributions. He received the fourth annual corner prize in two thousand eighteen for the transformation in India's energy sector. I now cordially request Sri Pishgol Sap to deliver the special address of this session. I'll hand over to Honorable Minister Sir. Sir, we can't hear you sir. Sir, we can't hear you.
My apologies. Thank you very much for your kind introduction and context setting. Sri K Ram Mohan Rao Garu, Chairman of the Vishakapattanam Port Trust. All the other esteemed guests who have joined this session on the, as a part of the Maritime India Summit two thousand and twenty-one, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. As the Honorable Prime Minister said, India has had a glorious maritime history. We are on the path of shaping an even better maritime future. And I truly believe that the wonderful program my colleague and friend Sri Mansukh Bhai Mandavya, the Honorable Minister, has put together through the Maritime India Summit two thousand twenty-one is the harbinger of significant change and transformation of the maritime sector in the years to come. In fact, the summit provides an excellent platform to all the stakeholders in the maritime sector to work together collectively to make India a global leader in this field. I was reading the program document and the wide span of subjects that I saw that are being deliberated upon, the number of breakout sessions that have been planned and the fact that the government of India and all the maritime states are working as partners to promote this sector is truly very, very redeeming and satisfying. In fact, India has always worked on the mantra of Vasudevakutumbhakam in the Sagar Mala program and as a part of the development of the port sector. I believe India has shown to the world significant effort to be very inclusive in our development of this sector and Sagar which stands for security and growth for all in the region. In one way epitomizes the spirit of Vasudevakutumbhakam, the world is one family. The vision of the maritime sector through the Maritime India two thousand and thirty vision launched by Honorable Prime Minister Sri Narendra Modi highlights the priorities of our government. The slated investment of rupees three lakh crore in various port projects will help create twenty lakh new jobs in this sector while impacting the overall economic development of this country particularly in our international trade very, very significantly. In fact, the investment in the Sagar Mala projects will boost our maritime infrastructure, will help expand our freight corridors, our capability to manage freight both for import and export and also the domestic freight which is now increasingly being moved through ports particularly on the east and west, the transform, transferring of goods between the east and the west. And all of these sectors, both international trade and domestic freight will become more cost-effective and will help bring down our current logistics costs which is estimated to be about thirteen fourteen percent of our cost of goods to a more acceptable international benchmark of eight percent. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is the need of the hour today. India cannot be competitive as long as our logistics costs remain so high and it's time that we plan for our port sector in such a manner that we can have modern and efficient ports, turnaround time of ships can be brought down significantly. A more competitive spirit will help to break, keep the costs at the port and in freight low and will help international players also look at India as an attractive investment destination and support Indian entrepreneurs in their efforts to grow and expand the Indian economy. Mr. Rambo, now you just spoke about tourism also and clearly Andhra Pradesh has a lot to offer. On the one hand, you have those beautiful lighthouses and some islands, but you also have such wonderful beaches. It's always a delight to visit one of the Andhra cities and have a walk on the beach particularly in the morning or evening. Pristine beauty is what you can see in the beaches of Andhra Pradesh. And I do believe this scenic, very natural landscape that Andhra Pradesh has to offer with the sea on one side and also the mountains on the other. The lovely weather that you offer to tourists and the delicious food, the very, very wonderful hospitality coupled with greater degree of infrastructure will help promote tourism and the ports can become a real important element to attract cruise tourism. To birth, to dock in the ports of Andhra Pradesh. Our government's three mantras for the infrastructure sector are upgrade, create and dedicate. In the last six years, the capacity of our major ports has almost doubled. We've developed post-based smart cities and industrial parks. We have integrated ports with the coastal economic zones. Several initiatives have been taken and we are working closely with the government of Andhra Pradesh to further develop road infrastructure, rail infrastructure, port infrastructure and promote the dedicated freight corridors both for encouraging and expanding economic activity, bring manufacturing to the state of Andhra Pradesh and promote industrial parks in the state of Andhra Pradesh. If we have to achieve one nation, one market, just like the GST was a transformational reform on the financial side and the indirect taxes side. I think integration of road, rail and waterways can truly make India one nation, one market, one supplier. I believe Andhra Pradesh has an important role to play in that and I do seek the cooperation and support of all the stakeholders from Andhra Pradesh and the state government of Andhra Pradesh in working together to connect our ports with better road and railway infrastructure in the days to come. As the Railway Minister, I'm happy to share with you that we are working on multimodal logistic solutions to bring down the cost of transportation and increase supply chain efficiencies. We are in fact currently preparing a DPR, a detailed project report for the east coast corridor which will connect Kharkpur in West Bengal with Vijaywada in Andhra Pradesh. And that way all the ports of east coast will also get connected to our dedicated freight corridors. I propose that this project may be done through a public-private partnership and once the DPR is ready, I will seek the support of the state government to ensure timely availability of land because any bidding for public-private partnership will not be successful unless we get the entire stretch of land in our control to enable investment to flow quickly into creating these dedicated freight corridors. But I have no doubt under the leadership of Chief Minister Jagannathan Reddy Garu, we will have full support from the state government in making this happen. We are also now starting the Roro services, the roll-on-roll-off services and double stack container trains from Andhra Pradesh which are helping industries in moving goods faster, saving time and improving the environment. Positive direction to bring down the emissions or carbon emissions and keep the Indian contributions to the global effort to protect our planet, to improve the climate. Railways is making significant investments and significant steps are being taken. In fact, by December twenty twenty-three, the entire rail network will be fully electrified and by twenty thirty, our entire railway network will run on renewable energy, some of which I hope will also come from Andhra Pradesh. Ladies and gentlemen, I am delighted to share with you one piece of good news on this happy occasion. As of twenty-eighth February two thousand and twenty-one, the Indian Railways had moved one hundred and ten crore metric tons of goods traffic, freight traffic which is exactly the same quantity that was moved in the previous year as on twenty-eighth February two thousand and twenty. So from two thousand nineteen first April to twenty-eighth February two thousand twenty, we had moved hundred and ten crore metric tonne and from first April twenty to twenty-eighth February twenty-one on a like-pal-like same period, the railways had again moved one hundred and ten crore metric tons. That means despite COVID, we have reached the same level of traffic, freight traffic as we were last year on the twenty-eighth of February. Of course, this year doesn't have a twenty-ninth of February, last year did. So we have again pushed back because of the twenty-nine February figure. But every day now will continue to grow and by thirty-first March, we would have exceeded, despite this being a COVID year, we would have exceeded last year's performance. I am sharing this good news with you to show you how under Prime Minister Narendra Modi's leadership, the country has had a very rapid V-shaped recovery. So we have vaccines, the V for vaccines on the one hand, now preparing our nations to face COVID and we have the V-shaped recovery, economic recovery of the other hand. All of this pointing to victory, V for victory. Victory from the pandemic, victory from the doom and gloom that people had projected, victory for the future. I have no doubt in my mind that this Maritime India Summit twenty twenty-one will be the beginning of our victory against high freight costs, of our victory to be an international player in the maritime sector, to our victory in making comparable infrastructure available in India better than the best in the world, our victory in ensuring jobs for lags and lags of our brothers and sisters and opportunities for our entrepreneurs, investors, our young startups and different stakeholders for a better future for the people of India. Friends, I appeal to all the stakeholders who have joined this Maritime India Summit to utilize this opportunity to transform from being service provider to knowledge provider and knowledge partners. I think if we reinvent with technology-driven solutions like robotics, automation, artificial intelligence, big data analytics and make our sector safe. By safe, I mean sustainable, agile, futuristic and efficient. I repeat, a safe maritime sector, sustainable, agile, futuristic and efficient. That is what the world desires to see in India. That is what the Prime Minister Sri Narendra Modi is encouraging all of us to achieve in India. I would urge all our industry captains assembled here today and the other stakeholders of our maritime sector. Let us build industry at sea. We on our part will ensure an ease of doing business. We'll work in partnership with the states also for ease of doing business at the state and local level. The state maritime boards also will engage with the private sector to increase their efficiency. Let's work towards faster channels of communication and action so that our goods will have faster speed in transportation, lower cost in transportation, bringing prosperity to hundred and thirty-five crore Indians and to all my brothers and sisters in Andhra Pradesh. As the Prime Minister said, that the maritime sector is a very, very critical sector, important sector for Atmanirbhara Bharat, a self-reliant, strong India. We are working to turn our coastal region into a role model for ease of living and ease of doing business. I echo the sentiments of Prime Minister Modi. Let us all work together, center, states and the maritime sector. And like in the railways, we have a single engine, a double engine and now in our long anaconda freight trains, we are also using three engines. Let us work together, the engine of the central government, the engine of the state government and the engine of our very robust maritime sector. Let us all work together with the triple engine to promote faster economic development and let the engine of growth and development in India prosper and flourish and all your businesses also prosper and flourish along with the country and the people of India. My compliments once again to the Minister Honorable Sri Mansukh Bhai Mandavya for bringing together this wonderful Maritime India Summit twenty twenty-one. I am missing Gotham Reddy, the Honorable Minister for Industries, Commerce and IT of Andhra Pradesh. A very good friend, very committed to development of Andhra Pradesh. I hope under his leadership, your sector, your industrial growth will take significant strides forward. And my compliments to the entire Andhra Pradesh Maritime Boat Team, all the ports in Andhra Pradesh and their leaders and the captains of industry in this sector. I wish you all well. I wish the Maritime India Summit twenty twenty-one great success and I pray for your good health and the good health and safety of your near and dear ones. Namaskar. Jayen.
I thank Honorable Minister Sir for an excellent and inspiring speech covering whole gamut of issues for Atmanirbhara Bharat. The next topic and overview of AP Maritime Board, Sri R Karikala Velvansar is an IS officer of nineteen eighty-nine badge.
Rambo, now, excuse me, I will take leave, I have other engagements. I will take leave from you.
Sir, thanks a lot, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, sir, for an excellent speech, sir. We are inspired, sir. Thank you.
Thank you and good luck for the rest of the session.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Sri R Karikala Velvansar is an IS officer of nineteen eighty-nine badge. He has rich experience in administration and developmental activities and departments like urban development, housing, industries, labor, unemployment, disaster management center, land revenues and municipal administration. Currently, he is also holding charge of Vice Chairman of AP Maritime Board. Now I request Special Chief Secretary, Industries and Commerce, Infrastructure Investment, Government of AP, Sri R Karikal Velvansar to give an overview of the AP Maritime Board. Over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ramon Rao, the Chairman of Vishakapattanam Port Trust. And I would also like to thank the Honorable Minister for his encouraging words and giving a good picture about the state of Andhra Pradesh. I also welcome the distinguished guest who have joined this meeting and especially the state session and the esteemed colleagues and audience and ladies and gentlemen. So very good afternoon to all of you. So Mr. Ramohan has given a very good picture, an introductory picture of the state of Andhra Pradesh. And I do not, you know, elaborate upon that. I would like to brief you about the state of Andhra Pradesh. Why state of Andhra Pradesh is a preferred destination for the investors? I would like to thank the organizers, especially Honorable Minister for shipping ports and internal waterways, Government of India for organizing this summit. This summit provides us an opportunity to exhibit the inherent strengths of the state of Andhra Pradesh. The state of Andhra Pradesh is a natural choice for any investor to come in and invest for the simple reason that it has got the very vibrant coastline. The coast, as we all know, is the second longest in the country and it has got six functional ports, sea ports, dealing with handling nearly one seventy-five million metric tons. And four new ports are under development. Besides, we are developing eight fishing harbors which will function as mini ports. So that way, in a coastline of nine seventy-four kilometers, we are going to have ten major ports, ten ports, you know, capacity to handle more than twenty-five to thirty million tons and eight fishing harbors which will have a coastal bus, so which will facilitate coastal shipping. So virtually it will be one port in hundred kilometers. In fact, the industrial corridors which are crisscrossing the state, we have three industrial corridors out of five industrial corridors which have been introduced in the country, notified in the country, three or, you know, in, in the state of Andhra Pradesh, three, we have benefited under three corridors. The VCIC corridor is the first coastal corridor, first coastal corridor in the country which have been notified and which is being assisted by the external financial agency like ADB. And we have Chennai Bangalore Industrial Corridor and Hyderabad Bangalore Industrial Corridor. So these corridors, we identified ten industrial nodes. These ten industrial nodes will be of the size of twelve to fifteen thousand acres of land. So these, out of these ten industrial nodes identified, the five industrial nodes are under implementation. So some with the ADB support and some with Government of India support, NIDIT, National Industrial Corridor Development Corporation's support. So the, the vibrant coastline. So, the vibrant coastline, the maritime sector is the lifeline for the state of Andhra Pradesh because most of the industries, the port-based industries, port-led industries are showing interest in coming to the state of Andhra Pradesh. As you are aware, the Chairman has pointed out, has mentioned in his introductory speech that forty-four thousand crores worth of MOUs have been signed during this summit and all these MOUs are highly realistic because they are going to be realized within a period of two to three years. The infrastructure is the major concentration for our state. In fact, our Honorable Chief Minister have introduced our industrial policy which is a very appreciable policy, in fact, a very progressive policy in the sense, the policy aims at reducing the cost of doing business. You are aware that we have been number one, consistently number one in ease of doing business, which has been introduced by Department of Industries and Internal Trade and along with World Bank. So, continuously we have been number one in the country and our endeavor is to reduce the cost of doing business. The logistic cost, it's at fourteen percent in the country. Our interest is to reduce it to nine to eight percent. And as our Honorable Minister has pointed out, the state has got a very good network of roads and railways and now with port infrastructure, it's going to thrive, the maritime economy is going to thrive and the logistics cost with coastal shipping, introduction of coastal shipping will get reduced substantially. And as the Honorable Minister has pointed out, we are developing multimodal logistics parts in every node, the ten nodes what we have mentioned, to facilitate transportation and we have six functional, seven functional airports, out of which two airports are cargo airports and we are building cargo infrastructure in two more airports. So, wherever we have the electronic manufacturing clusters, the airports nearby are being developed into a cargo airports. With the result, the logistics costs will come down and the investors' investments will be competitive and the products will be competitive. So, that is our interest. And industrial policy also, another salient feature of industrial policy is YSR AP one, that is the one-stop shop for the any investors to, who is willing to invest in the state of Andhra Pradesh. So, they do not go around, it's a single desk and single window and one-stop shop. It provides all solutions. It provides handholding, it provides facilitation, it provides market research, it provides market support, sales support, whatnot. So, all the, you know, support required for doing business is being given at one go in one location. So, this is the way we handle and our interest is to handle the, handhold the industries throughout its life cycle. So, the maritime economy, when you talk about maritime economy, these, all these ports, the six ports and four new ports will have a huge land bank where the industries can be set up and our steel plants, the Gindal Steel Plant, even Postco is looking for a steel plant in near Krishna Patnam. So, Krishna Patnam is the second largest private port and it is handling fifty-four to sixty million metric tons of cargo. So, it has got the good ecosystem where the industries are willing to come there and the Tri-City, the Chennai, Nellu and Chittu, these three locations, the Tri-City Ports, it is identified as one of the best locations in the country for investment. So, that way, we have got many strengths. We have a mineral strength, we have very strong mineral base and we have very strong knowledge base. It's a knowledge-based economy, more number of colleges, more number of technical institutes are there and we produce more number of, you know, skilled manpower. So, the investor will find it very comfortable to come over here with the land cost is cheap, you provide the infrastructure, the power and water and power also is, we give subsidy to power and we give water, water is the cheapest in the country, the water we, what we provide is the cheapest in the country. So, water, power, road network and the land. So, good labor relations, industrial relations is very good, very peaceful and we have a skilled manpower. So, with all these, the Andhra Pradesh stands first, stands ahead of other states in inviting the investment and we, 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 we see that all the approvals, whatever approvals required is given within a span of nine to ten days. Though we notify as twenty-one days, within twenty-one days, all the approvals will be given, but in practice, it is being given within nine days. So, that way, the very, very strong administration, our Honorable Chief Minister is very particular that we should provide a corruption-free and transparent administration and we have very strong presence of administration up to village level. We have village secretaries, we have ward secretaries, we have volunteers. So, that way, we have a very vibrant state, vibrant economy which will be very useful for the investors. That way, the Andhra Pradesh is poised to become the best location for the investors to come in and recently we have signed the two LNG terminals, you know, one with HNG, another with AGNP. So, these two terminals are going to come and we have good, you know, gas infrastructure right from Srikakalam up to Nellur. So, the gas infrastructure is there, city gas distribution is being provided by various players in all the districts. So, that way, we have a good network and we have a fiber network. Every village is connected with, with internet, with internet. So, that way, the communication becomes very easy and then we have a very strong road network and in fact, tourism also, as Ram Mohan has pointed out in the beginning, tourism is our area of interest where we have very good locations and we have, we promote, we plan to promote maritime tourism and all the seaports and fishing harbor, the mini ports will be connected through cruise, cruise tourism and we, we are preparing model fishermen villages to showcase how the, you know, living happening in the villages, especially in the fishermen village and we are aiming at an inclusive growth. All the fishing harbors will have a processing zone where the processing industries will come up so that the value addition will happen to the farmers, the fishermen's income. This is how the planning is done in such a way that the inclusive, inclusive growth happens in the long run. So, with this introduction, now I request my CEO to make a presentation on the port infrastructure, followed by another presentation by the Deputy CEO on the industrial infrastructure and the industrial opportunities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, for an excellent speech. Now, the next speaker on presentation on development of ports and investment opportunities, Sri NP Ramakrishna Redigaru. Sri NP Ramakrishna is a CEO AP Maritime Board as technical expertise in mega projects and secretarial administrative experience for more than thirty-three years. He is instrumental in development of four mega projects namely Caikinada Deep Waterport, Krishna Patnam Port, Gangavaram Port and Hyderabad International Airport. So, I now invite Sri NP Ramakrishna Redigaru to make a presentation on development of ports and investment opportunities. Over to Ramakrishna Redigaru.
Thank you, sir. At the outset, I would like to pay my respects to Honorable Prime Minister of India, Honorable Minister of State for Ports, Shipping and Waterways and officials of Ministry of Shipping who have kick-started the spectacular inaugural session of Maritime India Summit twenty twenty-one yesterday, giving us an opportunity to discuss today about the state ports and investments in Andhra Pradesh. Respected Sir, Sri Ram Mohan Rao Garu and Harikalwalon Garu, my boss and Special Chief Secretary Garu, distinguished dignitaries, investors from India and abroad, ladies and gentlemen. So, my speech will be slightly different, it will concentrate on what we have achieved. If once you see what we have achieved, you will be more interested in investments in Andhra Pradesh. So, before that, let me say a few words on, on maritime map of India, Andhra Pradesh was holding a minority share till nineteen ninety-nine, handling only two million tons of cargo per annum through Caikinada and Freshport. After development of three state ports in the deep water ports, Andhra Pradesh is standing number two position on the maritime map of India for last twenty years. Now, I'm happy to inform you that AP Maritime Board is keen in taking up various developmental activities in the nine, entire nine seventy-four kilometers long coastline, the second longest in the country. We are now presenting the achievements of Andhra Pradesh in the port sector till now and for the development conceptualized in near future through another four more greenfield ports. So, now we will go through Caikinada Port. Sir, oh, let us start. Okay, next slide. Sir, AP State Ports on nine seventy-four kilometers of coastline, we have fifteen notified state ports along with major port of Isarta Patnam. Sir, we have in Andhra Pradesh thirteen districts, out of thirteen districts, nine districts are coastal districts. So, the economy of Andhra Pradesh is greatly dependent on development of nine coastal districts. So, we have to concentrate more on the development of entire coastline of nine hundred and seventy-four kilometers. That is the reason why this AP Maritime Board has been constituted in that way. So, till nineteen ninety-nine, we have got only Yankaraj Port, Caikinada Yankaraj Port was working. So, we have taken up for development of Caikinada Deep Water Port with the assistance of ADB from nineteen ninety-six to ninety-nine. So, after construction of three deep water port bus, shore-connected bus for further development, we have privatized. So, that privatization is called brownfield port privatization. So, it means government constructs on landlord model, we construct bus and we privatize for operations. So, along with the operations of oil and coal operations, we have also given permission for construction of few more bus. So, we will see, nineteen ninety-nine we have privatized, so in a period of about four years, they have constructed another four bus. Now, we have got eight bus in Caikinada Deep Water Port handling about fifteen million tons of cargo. We'll just go through the, we'll have a five minutes.
Greatest civilizations from time in the world have evolved around waterways. This holds true even today. The Godavari region is a standing testimony to how waterways can be used for all-round economic programs. Sir Thomas Arthur Cotton changed the economic destiny of East Godavari region by building the Doleishwaram Barrage on river Godavari. This anecdote not only strengthened the economic conditions of the region, but also made the region the hub for food supply chain in the southern Indian penance. Such was the development in that region that a seaport had to be created to meet the demand and did play a critical role over the last two centuries. This added to the rapid economic growth of industrialization and urbanization. The seaport saw the region becoming an exporter of paddy for the last one hundred and fifty years. The brisk changes in the shipping industry made it essential to modernize the old anchorage port. The government of Andhra Pradesh commissioned Caikinada Deep Water Port in November nineteen ninety-seven. With Caikinada Seaports Limited became the concessionaire of Caikinada Deep Water Port, the first ever port to be privatized on the east coast of India in the year nineteen ninety-nine. Since then began a new era in port sector of Andhra Pradesh. With the herald of Caikinada Port, new opportunities are setting sail on the eastern coast of India and proclaim and proclaimed India's presence globally. With the potent combination of lasting agro-commercial and industrial production in the region and the setup of the world's largest new offshore oil and gas fields, the Krishna Godavari basin in India is an area of immense growth and potential. We not only meet the highest standards, but also set new benchmarks for the industry. We received several accolades and many important certifications, including ISPS compliance. Deep-sheltered waters with channel depths of fifteen metres and a total berth space of over three thousand metres are helping us ensure the least pre-berthing time in the industry. Kakinada Deepwater Port is an all-weather port that provides sheltered anchorage, twenty-four by seven operations, including night navigation. We have safe, spacious and efficient warehouses for storing and handling cargo. We at Kakinada Deepwater Port have an intricate and efficient security system. We are proud to add that we are the first port in India to have installed comprehensive CCTV surveillance and deployed biometric ID system. This not only adds to the safety measures of the port and cargo, but also ensures quick and easy logistics. This also makes us stand a class apart from others. The entire spectrum of liquid, bulk, break bulk, project cargo and other products for the import and export industries is handled with immense knowledge and expertise. We are also equipped to handle large ship-to-ship transfers and have helped India's oil majors meet the nation's demand by handling their ultra-large crude carriers or their ULCCs. Our proximity to the world's largest gas fields in the Krishna Godavari basin makes our location strategically very important. Forcing the specialized services required for deep sea exploration activities, we established the ultra-modern supply base and a shipyard which has been attracting all the world majors in oil and gas to set up their establishments at Kakinada for the last two decades. The supply base with six dedicated jetties for offshore supply vessels serves about two thousand OSV calls, making it one of the world's largest supply bases. Our state-of-the-art shipyard offers conversion, repair, construction and servicing of ships, rigs and offshore vessels. Equipped with ultra-modern floating dry dock and slipway with dry dock, our shipyard is destined to play a major role on the global stage. Our dedicated team provides a user-friendly single point of contact, ensuring our clients speedy responses on paperwork and clearances. To cater each client's unique needs, we tailor our services. Popular services amongst them include handling of coal, fertilizer and alumina. The port's fully mechanized eight million tonnes per annum coal handling facility features, fast discharge, dust suppression systems and safe storage. The coal yard is designed to store one million tonnes of coal at any given point. We offer a very unique facility of blending of different coals as per customer's requirement along with two thousand tonnes for our wagon loading. State-of-the-art modern fertilizer handling terminal is designed to handle six million tonnes per annum. This facility features fast discharge of cargo, online neem coating of the urea. Automatic bagging of cargo nearer to the wagon doors, ensuring dispatch of freshly bagged cargo. Ultra-large fertilizer warehouse can accommodate loading of two full trains at a time. Global seaborne container trade is believed to account for approximately sixty percent of all world seaborne trade. Kakinada Container Terminal has been established, enabling importers and exporters a seamless access to containers. Our container terminal is well positioned to serve India's agricultural, seafood and commodity hinterland, which exports containerized products like rice, sugar, maize, shrimps and paper products. Many leading food processing companies have set up their units in this region. Sixteenth of August, two thousand eighteen, a day earmarked in the history of Kakinada Port for having achieved a golden milestone by safely birthing the first Cape-size vessel, envy wisdom of the seas and discharging one lakh four thousand metric tonnes of CP coke. As now Kakinada Port ushered its capabilities to handle Cape-size vessel, enabling the port users to make huge savings in the freights and making Kakinada competitive. Our upcoming projects at the port include LNG, LPG and petrochemical terminals. We are not only creating India's finest private port, but more importantly, we are creating the world's eastern gateway to India.
We want to get LNG terminal in Kakinada Port. We tried a lot, but we could not succeed in the ninety-nine. But now we are getting, I'm happy to say that we are getting LNG terminal. Now in Kakinada Deepwater Port with an expenditure of nearly about four thousand crores. Along with Kakinada Deepwater Port simultaneously, we have carried out privatization of greenfield ports at Gangavaram and Krishna Patnam also. So let us go back to Gangavaram Port, which is the deepest port. Deepest port just fifteen kilometres south of Isaraputnam Port. It is handling super Cape-size vessels, two lakh DWT vessels. I am proud to say we have created this deepest port. So let us go and see what's happening in Gangavaram Port.
That knows no boundaries with a vision to fuel the world economy by enabling global trade through unmatched connectivity. India's gateway port to the world. Gangavaram Port, ultra-modern, deepest port of India. Gangavaram Port is a public-private partnership initiative with the government of Andhra Pradesh and is strategically located in Vishakapatnam, the industrial nerve center of Andhra Pradesh. Gangavaram Port's global reach and depth of hinterland uniquely positions it to handle increasing volumes of international trade. Gangavaram Port is the deepest port in India with all-weather round-the-year operations. Gangavaram is one of the leading ports in the country that has the infrastructure to handle the largest bulk cargo vessels, the Cape-size vessels. World-class cargo handling and evacuation systems and congestion-free operations boost the port's efficiency. The cargo loading and unloading systems at Gangavaram Port are amongst the best in Asia and have revolutionized cargo handling at Indian ports. Ever since the commencement of operations in the year two thousand eight, Gangavaram Port has been continuously raising the bars of the port operational standards in India. Gangavaram Port's distinct features give it a competitive edge. The world-class port infrastructure and efficient operations result in significant cost advantages to trade and port users. Gangavaram Port is equipped to handle a wide spectrum of bulk and break bulk cargoes. The port offers flexibility to handle newer cargoes and scalability to respond to the dynamics of changing trade requirements. The port boasts of an internal network of over twenty-four kilometres of conveyors, about forty kilometres of railway lines and twenty kilometres of roads. Gangavaram Port is also endowed with excellent external connectivity to national rail and road network, ensuring congestion-free movement of cargo to and from the port. Over the years, the port has created many operational milestones such as consistently achieving very high discharge rates and handling record number of railway rigs. The port is professionally managed by a team of experts who have significant experience in port operations and are trained to attain the highest levels of efficiency. Our three-tier security ensures a safe and secure environment at the port with round-the-clock monitoring and CCTV surveillance. At Gangavaram Port, we care for the environment and that reflects in our adherence to the highest standards in terms of pollution prevention and safety. Gangavaram Port stands tall in India's infrastructure landscape today. Beyond doubt, Gangavaram Port is the maritime jewel of India. Explore India's gateway port to the world, Gangavaram Port.
But now this is the port, this is also the deepest port in India, second largest in private ports. First Mundra, second is Krishna Patnam Deepwater Port. So we are proud to say Gangavaram, Kakinada and Krishna Patnam, all the three ports put together were handling about hundred million tonnes of cargo per annum. Probably it will go to two hundred million tonnes in next three, four years. So let us see Krishna Patnam also. What's happening there? So let's. Sir, I hope the investors particularly, they will appreciate how the greenfield ports have been developed on the coastline of nine hundred and seventy kilometres in Andhra Pradesh. And I hope you will be more interested in coming to Andhra Pradesh for development of few more ports. There are another ten ports are left for you. We are also developing another four ports under landlord model. So another ten ports are available for new investors. So let us just, I, I just want to finish up in another seven, eight minutes, just quickly. Otherwise, my colleague, Deputy CEO will not get the sufficient time to complete his presentation. So, so this is already, so till ninety-nine, we were handling only two million tonnes of cargo per annum. And after ninety-nine, now we are handling about hundred and ten million tonnes per annum. Next question. Sir, our, our vision, AP Maritime Vision twenty thirty. Presently, we are having three deepwater ports. And by twenty thirty, we would like to have seven, seven deepwater ports. Cargo handling capacity presently it is hundred million tonnes. By twenty thirty, we would like to have three hundred million tonnes per annum. Cruise terminals presently no, but we would like to develop at Bimli and Kakinada. Two LNG terminals, we would like to develop at Gangavaram, Kakinada and Krishna Patnam. Ranking among Indian maritime states, presently it is true. But whatever we are going to do, Gujarat is handling presently four hundred million tonnes. But that is gases cargo and liquid cargo. Because we don't have gases and liquid cargo presently, we cannot compete with Gujarat. So most probably will continue to remain number two, even of the development of another four, five ports. So this is also known to all of you. Gujarat is number one and it is number two. Presently, we are handling about hundred to hundred and ten million tonnes. By twenty twenty-three, we will be developing another four ports and we will be reaching two hundred million tonnes. Maharashtra forty-one, Orissa thirty-five, other maritime states. Very small. So I am happy to show this slide that we are going to handle three hundred million tonnes by twenty. tons by twenty twenty-three. This slide, it gives some encouragement to you how the developers are getting back their investments. You can see Kakinada Anchorage Port, Rawa Port if you put it aside, Kakinada Deepwater Port, Krishnapatnam, and Gangavaram, you can see the revenue stream, the way cargo handled and how they are getting the gross revenue. You can see, this will be available in the website. Now, so far, we have seen the previous development of three ports and their operational efficiencies in the previous slide. Now, hereafter, we are going to develop three more greenfield ports, one at Ramayapatnam, one at Bhavanpado, another at Machali Patnam, on landlord model. Kakinada SEZ Gateway Port is already privatized, so these three ports, instead of myself telling on this through speech, we will have video, just for five minutes.
Ports are the engines of economic development and sources of prosperity. Endowed with a coastline of nine hundred and seventy-four kilometers, the second largest in India, and strategically located on the country's eastern seaboard, Andhra Pradesh understands the importance of developing seaports and is poised to leverage its inherent maritime advantage. As a thriving exum cargo hub, Andhra Pradesh already enjoys a leading position with a major port in Vishakapatnam and fifteen other notified state ports spread across eight coastal districts. Government of Andhra Pradesh, under the dynamic leadership of Chief Minister Mr. Bayers Jagannam Mohan Reddy, has drawn up fresh plans for port-led development with three new greenfield ports to ensure comprehensive realization of coastal interland potential. The existing three non-major ports, developed under public-private partnership mode, have become gateways to Southeast and Far East Asia with their strategic locations, world-class cargo handling systems, and congestion-free evacuation. The Kakinada Anchorage Port, with a century-old history, was set up as a key facility on the eastern seaboard, and is an all-weather port naturally protected by seventeen kilometers length of Hope Island. Till the year 2000, the port was handling two million tons of cargo per annum. Another port in the same district, the Kakinada Deepwater Port, developed by the state government with three birds, was given to Kakinada Seaports Private Limited under the PPP mode for further development. The port came into operation in nineteen ninety-nine. Gangavaram Port, an all-weather multipurpose port, kick-started operations in 2009 under the PPP mode. It can efficiently handle two lakh DWT vessels. Further down south is the Adani Krishnapatnam Port, the second-largest private port in India. Operationalized in 2008, it can handle two lakh DWT vessels. All three deepwater ports, along with the Kakinada Anchorage Port, collectively handle more than hundred million tons per annum, second only to the state of Gujarat. Armed with a legacy of excellence in the sector and sensing an inherent need to meet the increasing cargo demand, the government of Andhra Pradesh has taken a focused approach to develop three greenfield ports at Bhavanpado, Machali Patnam, and Ramayapatnam under the landlord model. These all-weather deep drafted ports are all set to be operational by 2023, adding a national capacity of hundred million tons of cargo per annum. Ramayapatnam Port, located in Prakasham district, about ninety kilometers north of Krishnapatnam Port, enjoys excellent connectivity to National Highway sixteen and South Central Railway Line, both within five kilometers. Moreover, Andhra Pradesh maritime boat will be making effective outlays to the tune of three thousand six hundred crore rupees to develop the port. In the first phase, four berths will be built to handle cargo. With a deep draft of fifteen point five meters, the port can receive eighty-five thousand DWT vessels and handle fifteen million tons of cargo per annum. Aiming for an integrated development of the coastline, close to two thousand acres of land is being allocated for setting up of port-based industries. The primary hinterland of Ramayapatnam Port encompasses the districts of Prakasham, Guntur, Karnool, and Kadappa in Andhra Pradesh, and Nalagonda, Mahboob Nagar, Rangaradi, and Hyderabad districts in Telangana. Machali Patnam Port, located just sixty-five kilometers from the trading hub of Vijayavada in the Krishna district, will have fourteen point five meters draft and can handle twenty-six million tons of cargo per annum. Just fourteen kilometers from National Highway sixty-five and five point eight kilometers from the existing South Central Railway Line, the port is poised for massive development with an investment close to five thousand two hundred crore rupees. During the first phase, this deep water, all-weather multipurpose port, will have four berths. Catering to the primary hinterland of Krishna, West Godavari, East Godavari, and Guntur districts in Andhra Pradesh, and Nalagonda, Mahboob Nagar, Rangaradi, and Hyderabad districts in Telangana. Also during this phase, the port will receive sixty-five thousand DWT vessels and about three thousand acres of land is being allocated to develop port-based industries. Bhavanpado Port in Sri Kakkulum district is all set to be the epicenter of development, impacting not just its primary hinterland, but also the bordering districts of Chhattisgarh, Jharkhand, and South Orissa. Located within just four kilometers of the shoreline, the port has a natural deep draft of twenty meters and can easily receive one lakh twenty thousand to two lakh DWT vessels. Just seventy-five kilometers from Sri Kakkulum town, the port is well-connected to National Highway sixteen and the existing East Coast Railway Line, built within fifteen kilometers. With a proposed outlay of about three thousand six hundred crore rupees, the port will receive four berths to handle cargo, and with a deep draft of seventeen point five meters, the port will be able to handle fifteen million tons of cargo per annum. More than three thousand acres of land is being allocated for port-based industries. The fourth greenfield port, namely Kakinada SEZ Gateway Port at Kona Village in East Godavari district, at thirty kilometers away from Kakinada Deepwater Port, was already privatized to Kakinada SEZ developer. To Kakinada SEZ developer for development of the port under PPP mode with an outlay of three thousand five hundred crore rupees. As a state that prides in its maritime legacy and operational excellence, Andhra Pradesh invites you to invest in its maritime infrastructure and be part of a progressive future. Blessed with strong leadership, pro-people, and proactive administration, Andhra Pradesh provides a conducive environment for businesses and a plethora of opportunities for investors to flourish.
I have covered what we have developed and what we are going to develop to show much interest by the new investors. So, because the shot is... Because the shot is applied, I don't want to defeat the people, please give us extra time, please, extra time. Please give us ten minutes, extra time.
Okay, either. And now I think the deputy... That we will take that question.
We will take the last speaker, then we will conclude, we will take the last speaker, investment opportunities in portless industrialization. Mister Ravindra, Ravindra Reddy Deputy CEO AP Maritime Board, Sri Ravindra Nath Reddy is a retired Indian Navy officer. During his tenure in Indian Navy, he served alongside the Army in various special operations in Sri Lanka, in island territories of India. I now invite Deputy CEO AP Maritime Board, Left Hand Commander Ravindra Nath Reddygaru to deliver his speech on investment opportunities in portlet industrialization, marine tourism, and other allied activities. After this, I will be signing off, I'll have to participate in another session, our Deputy Chairman will coordinate this, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you can give us some extra time, sir, no problem.
Yeah. I don't know whether they have, Ficky has any problem, otherwise you can carry on, I'll be switching over to other meeting.
Okay, sir.
Special Chief Secretary Industries and Infrastructure, Sri Kanjal Venugan sir.
Better than your wife, say the bit.
Yeah, and the senior officers, delegates, visitors to the summit, ladies and gentlemen. You had witnessed and heard our senior officers describing the contours of our industrial and maritime landscape. They had also enumerated the advantages of doing business with Andhra Pradesh. I will take you through the data to support our claims so as to enable you to make a considered and correct decision to invest in Andhra Pradesh. This should also enable you to crystallize and consolidate your plans and help decide on the sector, area, and scale of your investment. As all the slides I'm going to show are available for download, subsequently, I will restrict myself to a small commentary introducing and elaborating on each slide. Andhra Pradesh Driving India's Transformation. Andhra Pradesh has been at the forefront of nation building right from its creation. We have been the largest state in South India with ample resources. After bifurcation, though our geographical areas reduced, our resolve to be one of the main drivers of Indian economy has not diminished one bit, but on the contrary, has increased. Our government, under the dynamic leadership of our Honorable CM, Sri Jagannam Reddygaru, is intent on positively transforming AP and thereby contributing to the transformation of India. This slide gives you an overview of the advantages of AP. Now, let us now showcase our progress in infrastructure. AP has six operational ports and four in the pipeline. We are ranked second in cargo handling and are aiming for much higher figure in the near future. We are also taking a holistic approach to develop a marine economy instead of just one aspect. We are concentrating in developing the entire ecosystem for marine trade, which will integrate the hinterland connectivity, the services sector, and the industries in a symbiotic relation and foster the overall economy of the state. Ports... Ports move goods. Next. But it is the people that run the ports and all its businesses, so it is equally important to facilitate easy movement of people. AP already has a very high density of airports per area. Three more greenfield airports with an international airport are under development. This will give freedom to the investor to look at any part of the state for setting up of industry without worrying about air connectivity. AP is endowed with not just a long post, it is also blessed by steep gradient giving us deep drafts at all ports, allowing operations of large-scale vessels with direct transit routes to all the major ports of the world. Our coast is also located strategically on the east coast of India, cutting two to three days of transit time while reaching the major economies in the eastern hemisphere. We are also very well-connected with the rest of the country with rail lines and roadways to feed and evacuate the ports. In addition, we have the national waterways number four running along the coast, which when functional, will add a fourth dimension to the connectivity. Till now, it was all about natural environment and physical infrastructure. Now, I'll talk about regulatory and administrative framework, proactive measures taken by our government, and their positive effects. Our government is in the forefront of regulatory and administrative support initiatives for investors and businesses. The concept of single-desk portal increased speed in approvals, removal of unnecessary inspections, and improved government processes has vastly reduced documentation delays and consequent costs. That is the reason we have been ranked first in the country in ease of doing business. Now, that was about ease of doing business. The AP government has gone two steps further. We have taken measures to reduce risk of doing business and minimizing the cost of doing business too. As you can see in the slide, the state is not just interested... As you can see, we are not just interested in your investments, but also keen to invest in your interests. There are five main ingredients for successful grounding of an industry, namely capital, land, water, power, and skilled manpower. During an annual interaction with investors and industry leaders, our Honorable CM had promised, "Come with the first, we will provide the rest." And now, I'll show you the data to back his promise. Power and human resource. We are a power surplus state, but we are hungry for more. The state is blessed with three hundred days of sunshine. With an expert policy, renewable, for renewable energy, and incentives in place, investments in solar power generation and energy storage projects are an excellent investment option. With three hundred plus engineering colleges, three hundred plus polytechnics, five hundred plus technology institutes, and seven universities, Andhra Pradesh is a major educational hub in India. Skilled manpower is abundantly available. Land and water. From the slide in front of you, one can see that the state has a land bank of well over forty-eight thousand acres of land, which is ready to allot, to be allotted for industrial ventures. Four hundred industrial parks are created by the state with a plug-and-play facility for industry. In addition, each of the ports, both new and those already in existence, have thousands of acres of land dedicated for port-based industries and services. We have five perennial rivers running across our state, the Godavari, Krishna, Penar, Gansadhar and Nagavali. These rivers and many reservoirs, both natural and man-made, give us an abundant supply of water. However, for those areas near the sea, where there is a requirement of additional water supply, the state is actively examining alternative sources of water. This in itself is an opportunity for investment for business entities in the field of water production. Talking about industrial parks, a special mention has to be made about one outstanding example of world-class facilities being provided in the state of AP. Sri City, located in the southernmost part of AP, close to the ports of Chennai and Krishnapatnam, is a quality destination for investments. The slide gives you the information in a nutshell. The state government has developed a brand-new industrial park, Chris City, with an extent of eleven thousand acres near Krishnapatnam Port, with world-class facilities for industries, intending to benefit from proximity to three major ports, Chennai, Krishnapatnam, and Kamraj Jar port. Transport routes and facilities are the veins through which the lifeblood of an economy courses through. Without good connectivity routes to bring in and evacuate cargo, ports are bound to fail. AP has three industrial corridors running through it. As the Special Chief Secretary had mentioned, the Wayzak Chennai Corridor, the Chennai Bangalore Corridor, and the Hyderabad Corridor. the Chennai Bangalore Corridor and the Hyderabad Bangalore Corridor. It has a Chennai-Hora Line, Chennai-Bangalore Line and Chennai-Mumbai Railway Lines, along with a maze of short destination railway lines crisscrossing the state. The roadlines and rail lines give the state an unique advantage in connecting every part of AP to a port. Added to the new network of airports mentioned earlier, AP offers seamless connectivity for movement of men and materials. The ports of AP are well geared up to handle the cargo that flows in and out of them due to the good connectivity described earlier. AP is ranked second in cargo handling capacity and increasing that capacity rapidly. Fishing and seafood processing is a major economic activity and the area of focus for the government of AP, not only is a major chunk of our population dependent on marine fishing and associated activities, it is also a source of major revenue for the state. We are the number one in India in exports of aqua products, leading the runner-up Kerala by a large margin. However, a major portion of our exports are non-value-added or basic process products. If one puts two and two together, one can identify a great opportunity for investments in this sector. The state government too has recognized the potential of this sector and is in the process of developing seven new fishing harbors all along the coast. The first package consisting of four fishing harbors have already been tendered out and the construction will begin shortly. Each of these harbors will have a land parcel ranging up to hundred acres attached to it as an integrated seafood processing park. We intend to extract the maximum value for the catch of marine products in our coast and invite investments in deep-sea fishing, aqua product processing and associated facilities in this park. Ladies and gentlemen, I've taken you through a tour of the infrastructure and facilities made available by the state of Andhra Pradesh for investments. I will now present you with a list of sectors in which we are anticipating investment in addition to those mentioned earlier. You can see them on the slide please. Andhra coast has long stretches of clean beaches and clear water. These beaches, as yet unexploited, are a great opportunity for tourism. A number of coasts with calm and shallow waters offer perfect venues for water sports. Recently, diving enthusiasts had discovered many dive sites with clear blue water with an odd shipwreck and other underwater interest for diving. We invite investment in all aspects of marine tourism. With a prosperous middle class raring to explore the wonders of the world, cruise tourism ventures will have no dearth of patterns. The coastal town of Kakinada is a leader in small ship and barge construction in India. A full and functional ecosystem is readily available for more ventures into this sector. We encourage investments in shipbuilding ventures that can bring in latest technology and systems. With no proper ship repair facilities on the east coast, Andhra Pradesh offers an advantageous position for setting up major ship repair and maintenance operations, offering service to all the ports of Bengal and beyond. Ladies and gentlemen, investors, industrialists and marine professionals, let me reiterate, the beautiful and bountiful state of Andhra Pradesh offers innumerable investment opportunities. Contact us with your business idea. We will extend all support in germinating this idea into a successful business proposal. We care about your idea and we care about you. We have a specific department for investor support. Right from first handshake, we will travel with you and assist you in fulfilling your business dream. We would like to encourage the enthusiasm and energy of small and medium enterprises. We realize they are the backbone of an economy. We will hold you and assist in grounding your proposal. We also look forward to association with businesses having services like marine project finance insurance etc. After participation, Andhra Pradesh has become a leaner and more dynamic state with a decisive and process leadership. Very eager to take the state and its economy to greater hacks. Come join the upright state of India and partner with progress. Through the development of maritime economy, let's share the ship of prosperity together. Thank you.
Thank you sir. And now it is my proud privilege to hold a vote of hands. On the website of. And outset, I extend my heartill vote of hands.
Sir, you are muted. Just unmute.
It is my proud privilege to report a vote of hands. Yes, special session on investment opportunities in Andhra Pradesh. At the outset, I extend my two votes of hands to Mr. Mandaji for the delivery to include this special session as part of maritime India about two point two billion. Time that just will go a long way. Leveling the load, long course lines for development of ports, island waters or ports in the state of Andhra Pradesh. So while indeed a rare privilege, I have refused to use this as a special feature in this conference. It's logistic cost in India, new all logistic cost in India and it will reduce it really down to eight to nine percent of GTC to have a competitive edge in the road environment is very crucial. Similarly, we have also focused on this special supply chain specialty in India. For this purpose, Sir Uyghurji insisted on this dedicated platform law starting from Harakot to Brujavada, which will benefit the poor in Andhra Pradesh strictly for faster movement of interlands cargo. Media level is an optimal investment for connecting their networks or concerned force as well. And we also hope that this media level will see a growing of renewable energy. On behalf of Uyghur court, taking water with the government of Andhra Pradesh, I extend my heartill gratitude to two speakers for his valuable partnership. I also congratulate the Chief Minister Jagannam Nidigarhu for signing MOU carrying away for investment to the team of forty-four thousand six hundred and nine crore in the state of Andhra Pradesh. I also express my gratitude to Sir Ram Varman sir, who focused on the advantages of normal coastal line, largest coastal line of second largest coastline of Andhra Pradesh. Sir mentioned about six ports and eight fishing harbors, which together can increase the capacity of Andhra Pradesh to handle twenty-five to thirty million tons per annum. Similarly, also a. That focus on development of industrial products and told us that out of five industrial products we are already participating in are coming up in Andhra Pradesh. Decided that out of seven airport, two airports are extraordinary for cargo handling and this makes Andhra Pradesh to be an electronic manufacturing product. Then I'll also express my gratitude to Sir Ankit Ram Sushant Nidigarhu for his presentation of development of ports and business opportunities. I sincerely hope that the US government will take you and participate in the development of ports and related industrial states, particularly on this idea of landlot model for three greenfield ports that is Ramaya Patnam, Rashipatna and Awarwadi. I am also thankful to Lieutenant Commander Nidigarhu for his local expertise on investment opportunities in port and industrialization, maritime, tourism and other allied activities. I am sure your speech will provide the necessary input for investors to take advantage of this session and make investments for setting up of industries and promote the industry. I thank the business collectors of Vishakhapatnam, Vishakulam, Genaram, Iskulu, Peshkalavi, Krishna, Bunro, Esprit Nalor and Patatham for their participation. I also express my gratitude to Sir Ram Varman, Chairman Vajrapur for giving me the opportunity to support the vote of hands to the office of the people, dignitaries or strength committee. He has also acknowledged in supporting and inspirational and collaborative efforts. Finally, I thank the press and media for covering entire event. Thank you all. One last time. Thank you sir.
Shukla sir, thank you for giving word of thanks, but before that we'd like to take some questions if any. Shakilish, can you please alert the audience if they want, you know, some clarification, we are ready to do that.
Sir, I think.
Yes, sir.
Why she has left? Perhaps if already you have. Have a question for the next one.
Yeah, Aklesha sir. Any, anyone, anyone like to, huh?
Question, sir, start, sir. Start a character. Please. Please, sir.
Yeah.
They can start. Let us talk to Aklesha.
Sir, I would like to ask the members, the delegates kindly ask the questions to honourable Chief Secretary sir and other dignitaries as such. If you have any questions, can you please just ask the question please?
If they have any questions, at least they can parrot send it to, it was already done by.
Both the presentations have been made by the CEO and Deputy CEO. So are made available in our website. Can you, can you go through that? And probably if you have any clarification required, maybe you can send it through mail also, that is also possible. Akles, if there is no question, maybe we can close the session.
Fine, sir. Sir, if the questions, if they are there on other platforms, sir, I will get those questions and then share it with your officer.
It is writing, so maybe you can communicate with them, we will clarify that and we will also be in touch with them. So thank you very much. So thank you Fikki and thank you VPT for giving us this opportunity. It's a wonderful occasion, it's a wonderful, you know, the event. So thank you very much for all of that and I would like to take any clarification also for the event after the event is. Maybe they can send it by writing so that we can reply in writing and we will also be in touch with those prospective investors. So thank you very much.
Now we also thank you for listening to us, for listening to us.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.